Thank you, Mayor. For the benefit of everyone in attendance, please observe the following. Silence electronic devices, including cell phones. Audience members are advised that the chamber and hallways carry sound, so please keep conversations to a minimum or conduct them outside the building. Photographs or video recordings using tripods or other means that would be distracting are to be taken only from the designated media area along the west wall of the chamber. And Mayor, I'll interrupt this for just a moment. I did have a request from the principal of Lawrence Jones Middle School to stand behind me and take a photograph when the honorary mayor comes up. If that would be okay with you?
That would be fine, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So unless you have special permission, please take the photographs from the media area. Members of the public wishing to address the council are asked to complete a separate speaker card for each item. Speaker cards are located on the table near the entrance to the chamber. Place the completed speaker card in the designated tray located by the city clerk, and when their name is called, speakers should come forward to the podium and direct their comments to the city council.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Barich? All of them have to public comment.
Good evening. For the benefit of the public, my name is George Barich. I'm a former Kattati City Councilman here. And I would like to remind the council that there's never been a policy of where people can take photographs in this room, in this chamber. I've been coming here some 16 years, and it's been well-established, the preferences allow people to take photographs from anywhere around the room. We had this discussion with Mayor Coleman as well. But anyway, no permission is needed in that instance. But I would like to speak to the fact that for a couple of years back, the city council came up with what were called "housekeeping rules." And now they're called "housekeeping items." And the fact is that I've been asking for a couple of years where these rules came from, and nobody seems to have a good answer. They've been called "housekeeping courtesies." It seems like no one has ever voted on them. They've seemed to come out of thin air, maybe conjured up in the back room somewhere of City Hall. But the fact is that any suggestion that there are some housekeeping rules of some kind are illegitimate. Most cities have a policy whereby if they're going to have such rules, they bring them up on the agenda, they discuss them at the deus, they open these items up to the public for public comment, they weigh the public comment along with the concerns and interests of the council, and they vote on these, and they make a formal policy. This is how it's done in most cities around the country. For some reason, Kattati doesn't want to do it that way. They decided to make it up as they go along, decide to keep the public out of the decision-making process of this issue. And I think it's irresponsible. I will say once again, I think it is your duty as city council leaders to do this the right way, to allow the public to be involved in the process of setting some kind of decorum in this room for conduct. You've put together a council code of conduct for council members, and a code of ethics. And if you want to put one on the citizens on how they are to behave, it should be discussed openly and honestly if you're going to hurt anybody's First Amendment's rights. If you're going to violate the Brown Act by insisting that people fill out a speaker's card, which is a violation of the Brown Act, you need to discuss this openly so that people can complain that that's not the way things are to be done. I would urge you, it's never too late to do the right thing. As city leaders, it's never too late. You have every opportunity to bring this up to the council in an informal, agendaized item, open it up for public comment, vote on it, and then maybe every year or so, review it, see how it's working for you, see what needs to be added, deleted, changed, amended, and bring it back. And I think that would work best for the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to make comments on the housekeeping items? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment. And we'll move on to announcements. The City of Kattati has special open office hours on Monday evenings from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. in the Community Development Department at City Hall as part of its Kattati Open for Business program. This program provides personalized assistance and information to developers, current Kattati business owners, and those interested in starting a new business within the city. The Rona Park Kattati Regional Library hosts events for all ages, including art exhibits, book clubs, and children's programs. All events are free and open to the public. For more information, call the library at (584) 9121, or visit www.sonoma library dot org. The Kattati Historical Society Museum is open regularly the second Tuesday of each month, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., Saturdays from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., and also by appointment. For more information, call (794) 0304. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixle.com. That's N-I-X-L-E dot com.
Mayor Stilwell, may I add to the announcements?
Certainly.
Just as a reminder that this Saturday is the Jane Mary Commerce Annual Dinner, celebrating the Citizen of the Year, the Business Ambassador of the Year, and Business of the Year. So that would be Saturday, the 14th, here at the community room. So I would encourage everyone to attend. Thank you.
Absolutely. Now we'll move into a fun part of our evening, which is our honorary mayor. We have Nathan Stockham of Lawrence Jones Middle School. Hopefully, I pronounced that correctly. Come on forward, Nathan.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Nate Stockham from Lawrence Jones Middle School.
So do you have anything you want to tell us about yourself, what you do at school, anything like that?
Yes. I love to play soccer, I'm an English teacher. I also like to go around the community and cheer my friends on when they are playing sports or in a competition. I also go around Sonoma County and volunteer at various different places with my school group, called the Interact Club. Some of my personal goals is to maintain my work line up throughout the eighth grade year and also throughout high school. I want to take AP classes and attend college and get my master's or PhD. I have quite a few career options, such as being a meteorologist, physical trainer, college professor, something to do. Hope anything that makes sense possible.
Very good, thank you. I know it's a little bit intimidating coming up here, so you did a really good job. Now I'm just going to ask the other councilmembers if they have any questions for you. I promise that we will not be tempted later. Councilmember Lehman.
Thank you, Mayor Stilwell. Well, welcome, Mayor Stockham. So I wanted to ask you, you mentioned a few interesting goals. One of them caught my mind, and this is kind of one that I haven't heard as much, meteorologists. Tell me what interests you about that? How do you think that's an possible career goal?
I like following the weather and how it changes the background.
And so what would you see with this? Would this be an on-keeper rule? Would this be by a science case then? Where do you see this going, maybe, if indeed that's the direction you choose?
More science space.
Well, I think if you continue the path you've chosen with that four-point-o, great, but I would keep that up. That could easily be something you want to do. Thank you for coming here and sharing that with us tonight.
Councilmember DeLacan.
Nate, is that better than Nathan? Is Nathan mayor in trouble? Is that why? It's okay not to answer that. You know, I think I too picked up on the meteorologist's part, and it seems like that's got to be a difficult, difficult job because you know, you've got these forecast models that come in, and there's a ton of science. And you know, a lot of times, they're not right. And that's so difficult because it kind of, the illness gets put back on an individual, but it's like, well, wait a minute, this is what the science shows. And so at the middle school right now, are there courses that you can take that are that specific, or is it still a broader science option?
There are no courses at the middle school. And Rancho and Lawrence Kattati High School may offer them later in years, but more of a progress.
Yeah, to me, it seems like, I never remember meteorology classes in high school, but I mean, I've been looking for them. I did take them to college, though. I thought it was very fascinating, and I chose to not to go to that profession for some obvious reasons. So thanks for coming. We're going to see you in a couple more weeks when you come back. And I'm sure by the time it gets to the mayor, she's going to ask some questions before you bring back, so thanks.
Councilmember Lehman. Sounds like you're very busy. Can you share a little bit more about the things that you do with the Interact Club? That sounded very interesting.
So their club is basically a club that's throughout the north bay. And we go around, we do fundraisers, like we sell cupcakes and cookies and all sorts of things. And then all the money that we earn goes to this girl to go to school in Mexico. And then also, we do also... So all this other stuff, and then we have meetings every single Thursday. And then we go out to the community, it's like March, we go to this place in Sonoma, and we plant flowers and all sorts of stuff to make the garden look better. And then we also, for Christmas, we pack, we pack Christmas presents for the kids that are in need of Christmas presents and deliver them to them.
Well, it sounds like you're really busy, and that you have a really good giving to the community, and I hope that that stays with you. And some of these jobs also are giving back, too. So I wish you well, and thanks for coming this evening. All right, face, Mayor.
Nate, thanks very much. It can be intimidating coming up here, but we appreciate that. One of the things that stood out was what Councilman Harvey was talking about and your community involvement. It's encouraging to see kids that are interested in helping out. I hope you continue with the community involvement and volunteering because it just makes you more of a well-rounded person as you went to whatever endeavor you made down the road. Thank you.
Very good. And I may be the only one who caught it, but you also said something about the law. I'm an attorney, so if you need any advice about law school, let me know. But also, I just, I think it's great, too, that you've got the sports interests and the science interests. I mean, you really do have quite a bit on your plate, and it's very impressive. So the only thing we would ask is when you come back in two weeks, if you can maybe talk to your friends and see what can the city do better for you and your age group. We've had talk before, trying to open up a skate park or like a teen center or something along those lines. So just checking in with your friends and see what you might be interested in because we're old and we don't know. And then also, it also sounds like that we're already giving back so much. Normally, we ask people, what can we do for the city as well? But you're already doing it, so you can check that on your list. So anyway, we're looking forward to seeing you in two weeks. I wanted to see, is there anybody that you brought with you today that you'd like to introduce to us?
Yes, I brought my mom.
Very good. And your principal is here, I understand. Very good. Thank you. Well, welcome. And we look really forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks.
Me, too. Thank you.
Mr. Barich, yes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With all due respect to that fine young man who just spoke and his family, I spoke about this item a couple of weeks ago when I simply asked the council that I think it's really high time that the council do a brief introduction to what this whole idea of what honorary mayor is all about. You know, not all of us attend these meetings over 16 years. And I think it's very important that you make an introduction to the public of what we're actually doing here. It's an odd, it's an interesting and odd title, honorary mayor. I could see honorary student, student appreciation night, something along those lines. The honorary mayor thing does kind of beg the question, what this is all about? What is the true purpose of what we're doing here with this item? How are these children picked? That issue's never come up. Do they have to have a certain grade point average, certain amount of extracurricular activities? What is it that, who decides these young men and women come before you? I think, I do have a theory, though, that I think, you know, it's a feel-good moment. And in a city council meeting where it's the people's house and where people want to bring issues before the council, then sometimes they can get a little heated at times. It does beg the question whether really it's a good idea to have any children here under the age of 18 at all, or at least inviting them here. Surely, they have a right to be here, but it surely begs the question. But what I'm most offended by through the years of watching this process and items come before you, and I've been silent up until recently, is this constant asking these young adults to come back in a couple of weeks with what, how they think that they can improve Kattati, or what you can do to improve Kattati. And we've seen their hopes and dreams, you know, tarnish over the years. We've had kids come up and ask for skateboard parks, swimming pools, libraries, you know, dog parks, you know, you name it. And I feel that the city gives these kids a lot of lip service, and they really don't give them the truth that the city often does not deliver, has no desire to deliver, and just gives these kids lip service. And I think it gives them a false sense of hope. I think it gives them a false sense of confidence. And more important, I think it gives them a very bad image of local government, that they're being played. And I don't like it when children are being played. I think it's disrespectful and not up to the standards of a city council. So I would ask you to see a brief introduction on this, and let's explore this a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to comment on the honorary mayor? Yes, please. And it's honorary mayor program, not Mr. Stockham that we're talking about.
I wanted to ask if you could consider a council government such as me would be a great person, be a great representative. You'd have a much better continual input, and it would much more involve you and our community.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody else wish to comment on the honorary mayor program? Yes, thank you.
My name is Scott Johnson. I'm the city principal of Lawrence Jones. And I can speak to how these students are picked. First of all, we have many, many great students. Of course, to select these students, we do look for they live in the City of Kattati. We look for above a 3.5 GPA. It's great if we can find a suitable candidate with a 4.0. We look for somebody that's involved in the community and embodies those cornerstones that we hold dear at Lawrence Jones Middle School. It's integrity, perseverance, service, and discovery. We look for somebody that's also active outside of the classroom, on the campus, sports, clubs, things like that. And I can't think of a better candidate at our school than Nate Ethnisheim. So I just wanted to let you know how the candidates are picked. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. We have any more public comment on the honorary mayor? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. We'll move on to approval of final agenda. Are there any changes to our agenda?
Fair enough.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to citizens' business. I've got two speaker cards. One is from George Diddle. Do you want to come forward?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm George Finley. Eight-five-five, Richardson Lane of Kattati. And first thing I want to do is tell you how much I appreciate the results. There have been a lot of tough meetings and addresses in the Kattati community here in East End. It's definitely been a hit in every one of your staff pieces. So with that, now, I'm here to address the Kattati General Plan, which is coming up soon for the council's people, I understand. I emailed the council earlier. They got up and submitted this kind of information. I provided mainly with some plans that you could have given that I'm referring to. I realize that this plan, this is only a plan, and the thing that we're concerned about myself is that being, something being in the plan seems to be a set precedence. So that's why myself and other residents from Richardson Lane are concerned. The city certainly did get the attention to the residents on and around Richardson Lane when the plan showed a connector road from Gilman Ranch Road to Richardson Lane and drastic rezone of parcels in the area from rural residential, one and a half acre, to low-density residential, which is a half acre. An overwhelming turnout of members and speakers at the January and February planning meeting objecting to making Richardson Lane a through road led to the Planning Commission vote to strike this part of the plan, from my understanding. I didn't have the headsets during any meetings, so I really didn't know what it was about. So I'm here tonight just to reinforce the many residents' opinions and I hope that you will consider their concerns when you make your decision on adopting the general plan. This Richardson Lane section of the plan made no sense to any of the residents and visitors that I interviewed prior to the planning meeting. And I included a list. I know it's not official petition or anything, but I just got people's names and addresses that everybody was going to say what's going on, you know? And I explained to them, somebody said, oh, you're educating. Someone asked me if I was one of those educated neighborhood. I don't think I was educated, and I tried to pass on exactly what I'm saying here. I didn't realize it's a plan. It's not something that's got to happen, but it could be. So the connector route looks feasible. When you look at a two-dimensional plan, just a bird's-eye view, it looks feasible, you know? It's a short distance. Okay, well, anyways, I think I said good enough.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Finley. And I apologize for mispronouncing your name.
No problem.
All right, I have another speaker card from Lori Oldman.
Good evening. Again, I would like to address the lack of information on how and what was presented now on March 24th with the general plan update. There have been no updates to the website for the general plan since the February 17th meeting. No minutes have been published since September with the Planning Commission. We residents deserve to have all the information necessary to be active participants in the adoption of the general plan update that affects our futures in the city. Please, the town, allow time for those opposed to the general plan update to review the plan that is proposed we submitted on March 24th. Releasing the information Friday before the next council meeting will enable the plan to be rubber stamped through by the council, and the plan will not have been collaborative ever as it should have been. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Barich.
Thank you. Council, we have, this year, we have a new mayor and a new vice mayor. And I want to bring to your attention, if you haven't already noticed, that our vice mayor, Mr. Moore, is referred to by no less than three bar owners in town as the unofficial town drunk. And I think it's amazing that he is now vice mayor of this town. Here's a guy who has threatened to run me out of town in these chambers, run me out of town, face-to-face, in these chambers. And I would like to ask you, Mr. Moore, how is that working for you? How is that working for you?
We're not allowed to have that.
Okay, well, that's a question I have for the council.
Okay.
Okay, general question. And the fact is, Mr. Moore, you were appointed to this council because you can be controlled and because you're not too bright, okay? You accuse me in the local newspaper of acting like a two-year-old in the community voice. You invited the NAACP into these chambers, one of the most inflammatory racist groups in the country. You invited them here in 2009 to make a mockery of these chambers. And I think you should be ashamed of yourself. You orchestrated that. You actually brought out the racism on the council by doing that and shamed the town with your antics. And, Mr. Moore, you have refused to shake my hand in the past when I've offered you my hand.
Mr. Barich, I think this is out of our subject matter jurisdiction area. I know that that...
Sorry, I have a floor here. I can speak to any item, any matter.
That's within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, so please try to stick to those items that we have subject matter jurisdiction over. Thank you.
I'm addressing Mr. Moore's character and his ability to lead as vice mayor. And I think I have my right, I have a right to do that. And you have refused to shake my hand, but I want to give you an opportunity tonight to show what a sitting leader you can be, and that you can make mistakes, and you can own up to them. And I want to offer my hand, to shake my hand tonight.
Please do not touch the dais.
Would you shake my hand tonight, Mr. Moore? No? Yes? No? Thank you for that acknowledgement. This is why a lot of people feel that Kattati is being run into the ground, that Kattati is running into the crapper. And I don't... And I also want to let you know that you can allow speakers to have more time if you allow, unless you need me to be home in a hurry.
Does anybody else have anything, any items that they'd like to address during citizens' business? All right, seeing nobody else, I will close citizens' business. Sorry, I didn't see your hand. That's why we have more than just one set of eyes up here.
I didn't wait until the last minute, so we didn't have a reason to not see it. And I have a card to turn in for the next items coming up. I just wonder who the democracy really requires us to listen to somebody like George Barich or he the mayor, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else wish to comment during the citizens' business? Seeing none, I will close citizens' business. And I'll ask for any direction on future agenda items.
Madam Mayor, if I might, not a direction on a future agenda item, but one correction for the minutes. I think it was mentioned that Mr. Councilmember Vice Mayor Moore was appointed, and it was to initially, he was actually elected, if I remember correctly, by a rather large war margin over the next person in the election. So I'd like to make that point, to make sure it's in there. Thank you very much.
Understood, thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may?
Absolutely.
Just for the record, I have never in my life ever called a little Asian group, although had nobody called them, I may have. And I'll just leave it at that, just for the record.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. So are there any councilmembers wanting to give direction on future agenda items? I see.
I do have some. Madam Mayor, if I may?
Certainly.
I'm interested in seeing what we can do, potentially, at maybe contacting a internet carrier that would be interested in assisting us with advancing the wiring capabilities of the industrial part, such as, you know, Sonic or Google or Homebrew, they may be. I think that that's an area that would be prime, and they would appreciate that if there's someone else out there. You know, maybe some sort of a community internet type program, something like that. And I know we have a lot of, something to consider.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else with a agenda that wants to see? All right, thank you. So we'll move on to the consent calendar items. Item five is the Kattati Train Depot Notice of Completion. And number six is the motion to approve contract with Firma for Falletti Ranch site improvements. I see the city clerk approaching you, so there may be comment cards.
It's below the contract.
Okay, great. So we'll open it up for public comment on the consent calendar items, and I have a card from Prude Draper. You get to come back up here. Sorry, I keep getting close to the mic, but every time I say keywords, it sounds like an explosion going off, so I didn't want to say Prude Draper too close to the mic.
I'm really sorry. My hearing aids don't work very well in here. I'm not why I suggested that. Are we on the Cattati Train Depot or the contract with Firma?
Both items are on the consent calendar, so you can comment on either.
Okay. I'm delighted that you're noticing that the depot is finished, you're going to file a notice of completion, and I know we had a nice meeting there to bid farewell to our former past city manager, but maybe we can have another grand opening of some sort? And as I had proposed before, it would really be a wonderful idea to initiate our new tourist attraction, the Albino Redwood, because I tell you, I never go anywhere without somebody saying, "How's that tree doing? Is that tree okay?" And a young volunteer in the museum that works with me Saturday said, "I drove all the way around and I could see it looks good. It looks like they've taken good care of it." There are a lot of people that are interested in that tree, and we should combine the two. I think John, Mayor Dela, former Mayor Delasso and I talked about that in the past. Okay, now, the contract with Firma for Filetti Ranch site improvements, I'm just really, really happy to see that somebody is proceeding with getting some kind of a plan for the Marana Filetti, and I notice that part of the contract is to examine what will keep the buildings from falling down. And I credit Delasso for getting those darling sheep that are out there keeping the grass down and looking so picturesque again, one of the favorite things about Cattati. There are a lot of things about Cattati that I really like a lot. I'm sorry, George Berish doesn't, it's surprising that he stays considering how much he hates the place, but anyway, I would say, I don't, I read through the Firma proposal. I presume that you listened to or contacted others that would do the same kind of work and that you liked this one the best. I have great admiration for the advice of all of you, and I would say, "It sounds like a really good idea. Let's go for it." I had lunch with Jenny Filetti the other day, and she's still saying, "I don't know why they don't do anything to keep that house out. I don't know why they don't do anything to keep those buildings together. I don't know why they don't do something about those faces." So more power to you, for using some of your money to get it in a businesslike way. Thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Beric.
Well, it's often been said, there's no fool like an old fool. And, pardon me, I have the floor. It is amazing how the council allows some people to come up and speak before this town who have done more damage to this city than is imaginable. It really is amazing. Here's a woman who has done so little to, for Cattati. Cattati is a poor town, is a town with a terrible reputation.
Mr. Beric, we need to stick to either the-
No, I get to answer, I get to answer and clear my reputation. This woman made personal attacks.
No, she didn't.
Okay, let's talk about Filetti Ranch. Let me talk about Filetti Ranch.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay? Because it is because we have this Filetti Ranch at the expense of having a successful and thriving town because of people like Prude Draper, okay? Filetti Ranch exists at the expense of skateboard parks, dog parks, libraries, and swimming pools, because these old fools decided to make a park across the street from a city hall, prime real estate for low-income housing, parking, city buildings, playgrounds, and so forth, for some sheep to roam. Bought a piece of property with buildings falling down without inspection. People came here so wanting to buy that park, whether things were falling down or not, goes to show the buffoonery of some of the people in this town who are making a mockery of our town. I love this town, I love what this town can be, like an old jalopy. It needs to be refurbished, and it needs to be renovated, and it needs self-respect. And I'm one of the citizens who want to see it achieve success and respect. Excellent, thank you.
Is there anybody else who has comments during the consent calendar items? All right, seeing none, we will close public comment.
Move to approve items five and six.
Second, I have a motion of second. Call those in favor, say aye.
Discussion, discussion. Before we vote, two things, and I got asked, because we have so much excitement in public comment, which is always a fun thing, but I wanted to ask staff and through the mayor if we could, number one, I'd like to see if we hit some more headphones, because it appears those work very, very well for the people in our audience, and I think we need a few more than we realized, so that's number one. But number two, and excuse me, this got asked, and I did want to mention it earlier after public comment, but I wondered if staff could make a point to notify Mr. Ditley and Ms. Altman for the general plan update, to let them know the date it comes to council. I have a feeling that's something they'll want to be there to attend, so if you could, I know you have their addresses, I believe, if you could drop them know, that would be handy. And lastly, I would like to say, because this has been mentioned a couple of times, we actually do have a city dog park here in Cattati, very nice one, folks, visit it sometime.
Give your bid.
All right, thank you. So, I have a motion of second on the consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
See sure that that was a pliable vote in support of consent calendar items five and six. And moving on to the regular agenda, we have a process to establish a Measure G Citizens Oversight Committee, and I believe I'll return to our acting city manager, DeMirobit.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So, as everyone will recall, Measure G had a provision within it that required an independent citizens oversight committee with annual audits of the Measure G funding, which of course is the 1% for nine years. And within the council, council staff report, you will see sort of an outline of a proposed process for the oversight committee. And the measure before you tonight really is to look at the proposed language and discuss it and see if you have any further insight or thoughts on how it might be tweaked or modified. And the basic outline of the oversight committee is, has follows. So the membership would be, they'd have to be residents of Cattati, of course, and they would be appointed and shall serve in accordance with the process that we have in place now for planning commissioners, so it follows the same process. The positions would be voluntary, they'd be, it's an unpaid position. And the responsibilities for the oversight committee would be to act as an advisory body to the city council, which provides oversight of revenues and expenses pertaining to the portion of sales taxes from Measure G. And they would provide annual reports to the city council on revenues and expenses related to Measure G. Their purview would not include oversight on the enterprise or other funds related to Measure G. So they also wouldn't have purview of a decision-making priorities, which of course is the city council's responsibility. And the proposed meeting frequency would be on an annual basis, and this generally would be in the fall after the annual audit is complete that we do. So they have that available to them as well as any other information that they would desire relating to Measure G revenues or expenses. And these meetings would be Brown Act meetings, and they'd be conducted in accordance with Brown Act. And they would be supported by our existing administrative staff out of the Admin Services Department and City Manager's Office. So there would be, there'd be no need for additional staffing, it just would be part of our dedicated responsibilities. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions or offer any clarification.
Thank you. So does anyone on the council have questions? Yes, Councilmember Delasso.
There's a couple of things I couldn't seem to find, unless they're buried in the municipal code 2.1, 6.015. Wondering about staggering of terms, especially with an initial appointment for a new committee commission, and also the length of what those terms, and if they're meeting annually, obviously I don't think we're going to have a one-year term, but you know, is it appropriate to have some of them as two and some of them as three years for that initial appointment? So then there's some staggering going on. And I didn't know if it was already in the municipal code, but it just wasn't cited in the report, and that's what I wanted to ask.
So I don't, I don't believe that is in the municipal code, but what, you know, what I've seen in some other places is, in some, you know, in some places where they have an oversight committee like this, they will intentionally build in a staggering, but on this initial draft, it just, it seemed like, I think from our perspective, that because they're appointed by council members, their, sort of their term would be concurrent with the council member's term. And so that would kind of build in a natural staggering and term length.
Okay, well, that answers that question for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Landau.
Glad you asked that question, because that was the question I had, what the term was served, would be as far as the staggering, I haven't thought of the fact that actually it does mimic ours, but I wanted to share that we recently, within about a year and a half, got some unclaimed power, had to start a couple committees, the board, the BAC, and the RAC, the Great Payer Advisory Committee, and the Business Operations Committee. And we went to a lot of work to stagger, and it turned out, it wasn't terribly necessary because of the natural order of affairs, within a year and a half, we had a couple of people leave each position due to new jobs, new things in their life, and the result was, it actually made it kind of more difficult for us in a way to try and fill terms. So it may not be a huge thing, but I'd be curious, and I'm not sure where this is, do we have anything about the ability to serve more than one term to, whatever terms of service finally are, and whatever that is in that? I'd like to see it written up in the final description for this.
Yeah, in terms of, in terms of the number of terms they can serve, I don't believe there's a limit on it, it's just concurrent.
I would, I think it's a good point that Councilmember Delasso brought up, I'd like to see it in this as we put it out, because that would be helpful for the public. Thank you.
Councilmember Hart. Can you explain a little bit more to me about the exact review of the revenue and expenses? This money is going into the general fund, so it ends up being just a pool, and yes, we can identify how much goes in there from the sales tax, but we don't do our budgeting and planning based upon, you know, this hunk of the general fund goes here and we're paying for this out of this, you know, section. So how, exactly how is that going to work? How do they know what revenue and expenses are Measure G specific or not? Because I'm assuming, based upon the word oversight, that they're really looking to make sure that we're spending it in a way that's appropriate, so it holds us accountable for that. So I just need some help with that.
Yeah, so, right now, Measure G is, it's unrestricted general fund, so like any other unrestricted source of revenue goes into the general fund, as you point out. And in terms of, in terms of how that would typically be accounted for, the revenue, of course, is easy to account for, but in terms of expenditures, it would be broken up in the same fashion as the rest of the unrestricted general fund. So if you were to look at, like, for example, like a pie chart of the general fund and how it's spent, Measure G would just be a portion of that, so it would be part of, it would be broken up in the same distribution, because you don't track the dollar, you know, as it comes in as a dollar of revenue, you don't track exactly which, which one it goes to unless the council during the year says, "This program, this project is to be exclusively funded through general fund," you can make some adjustments that way, but otherwise it's, it's unrestricted, so it would just be dispersed in the same ratio as all the other general fund money.
But you could identify it by having either a specific fund source or an account structured, so, you know, these dollars that come in as revenue are then put into, let's say, a fund source that's a numeric or alpha, whatever, however you want to do it, and then you can, you can track it that way. And let's say you're spending, I'm making numbers up here, you're spending $50,000 on a new police car. I know it's not going to happen, but let's just pretend. And $20,000 is coming from Measure G revenue, $30,000 is coming from this other fund source, whatever it is. So there is that kind of tracking that we see now.
But we, we don't see that, and that's what I'm asking, are we going to be doing something like that, where we say, "Okay, here's a police car, and, you know, $10,000 came here, and $20,000 came here, and $30,000," you know, that's what I'm asking, and then will they only review the part that was Measure G? I'm just a little confused.
Yeah, I mean, in the absence, in the absence of some specific direction on how that revenue is handled, it would just be used in the same ratio as any other unrestricted general fund money. But I, you know, I would think that maybe as we get into strategic planning this year, that might be a good discussion as to whether we want to put that in a separate account and make, you know, make deliberate spending or expenditure decisions on that versus sort of the general fund as a whole. But I think that's something that certainly can be discussed.
I mean, because without that, then it's really just everything that comes out of the general fund, the majority of which is, is salaries and benefits, so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I think first of all, I'm afraid we might have just scared away whatever new finance manager, we might have got close to hiring. Hopefully we won't have to do that, although it is a good question, and I'm glad someone brought it up. But it occurs to me that, yes, because this is essentially a general fund-based thing, what will be required of this committee is they're going to have to take this as a generalized approach, there's no question about it. And what they'll be doing is assessing prioritization, and where our budget's going to, and most importantly, the second key key component, which they're really here to be a watchdog for, is making sure that the basic services that we promised to maintain are maintained as promised. Now, that's, will probably be a self-evident thing, but I think it's good to have a pair of eyes on that, particularly since we manage it. So I don't know, I'm open to the discussion, I don't know if it'll be absolutely necessary to have to redefine the budget to what's to what, because I think anybody interested enough to serve in this committee will be able to take a look at this, see the general sense of what Measure G entailed, see the general sense of where spending goes and how things work, what things are maintained, and where our investment in city infrastructure and services goes, and will be able to give us a good report back, and there is something if they feel we're meeting the spirit of Measure G.
All right, do you have any comments, Vice Mayor Moore, before I open it up to public comment?
I do. My concern is the ability to define five citizens that would want to serve on this committee. And I'm wondering if we're not locked into five, because we didn't define it in a measure of what size that committee would be. So in essence, we could have a committee of two that could be an oversight on this. I mean, we haven't, we haven't defined that yet.
We, no, the measure itself did not define the size of the committee, although they could be made up of citizens from existing commissions, and they could be planning commissioners, for example, or they could be Cattati residents that are under the URC, you know, if you can, if they're so willing, you know, pull from existing bodies that were already created.
And, and we have nothing in our mandate to set that body to be a five-member body?
Uh, no, no, but I would at least recommend that it's a, that there is a odd number, in case there's any sort of, you know, because I said the majority, you know, hopefully mostly, hopefully it's unanimous all the time, but there's the possibility that there's some disagreement among one or more members, and so you'd want to make sure that you have an odd number of people.
I think five would be ideal, I think in crafting that, we need to make sure that we're, you know, just lower substance and not have any flexibility on there if we are not able to gather the support that we would like on there. I don't know that I'm sensing there's a huge demand or desire for a lot of people to serve on that, but I could be completely wrong.
Okay, do we have any more questions for staff before I open it up to public comment?
One more thing I'll just add to that is that the proposed formation mechanism would be a resolution, so it would be fairly straightforward to change that if needed in the future.
Okay, and to clarify, you're just looking for direction tonight, it's not that, that's actually being proposed this evening.
That's correct.
Thank you. All right, so with that information, I will open it up to public comment, since we wish to comment on the Measure G Oversight Committee. Yes, Mr. Beric.
The whole idea behind the Measure G Oversight Committee is so ridiculous. The whole idea behind the Measure G oversight committee is so ridiculous for following reasons. The council's going to do what they want to do regardless of this hand-picked committee of lapdogs that you can find in the community to do your bidding for you, and I think this oversight committee is nothing more than a way to diffuse or divert responsibility of the budget and criticisms of Measure G tax increases to this committee, so that you can skirt the issue and blame the committee. And it's very convenient, and it's another layer of city government that we don't need. You need to take the heat for the tax increase, you need to take the heat and the responsibility for the budget process. We don't need another five citizens in here trying to meet a few times a year to give you advice on something that, you know, you're going to, you're going to do what you want to do anyway. And Susan Harvey was exactly right, stole my thunder, that was my thought exactly, except you articulated it much better than I could have. You nailed it on the, nailed it on the head there. The fact is, you know, you're, we've had members of the city council that couldn't follow a budget to begin with. To think that you're going to use another layer in the budget showing Measure G funds on a sub-line is, it's just, it's ridiculous. I, I remember when Bob Coleman was on the council, he couldn't, he couldn't determine how much we were paying city employees because we were dividing things into thirds. And he said, geez, our public works people are only, they're only making $33,000 a year. I said, Bob, you got to triple it. He was dumbfounded, the poor guy, you know, he didn't get any background on the budget. He hadn't been here before the budget process before. This is just ridiculous, you don't need to do this. Take responsibility, and, you know, don't, don't cloud the process with, with another entity that you're going to be able to criticize and blame and to use as a scapegoat. I think we don't, we don't need that, you know, Katati's got enough problems.
Thank you. I believe I saw your, your hand up as well.
I would like to address the council on the selection of members for the citizens oversight committee of Measure G monies. To be on an oversight committee, the process seems to be the same as nominating for a planning commission. The candidate has to be nominated by the current council member. A citizen advisory committee needs to be impartial and biased, and at least have one degree of separation from the entity, entity that oversees. How about coming up with a creative way to complete the selection process? Perhaps a high school leadership or government civics class could choose the panel as a class project. This would be a win-win that they would achieve an impartiality for the city committee and give an opportunity for less than the local government for the youth, and let the youth know that their opinions are valued. In any way possible, shape, or form, a selection committee, a selection of citizens advisory committee needs to be unbiased, represent the diverse views of our community.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on the Measure G citizens oversight committee?
Thank you. I think that it's a great idea to have a citizens committee. I think the more young citizens you can get on it, the better. I think Laurie's idea is a worthy one to perhaps look at the high school students that live in Katati that are interested in finance and get their views on what, how that money should be spent. Certainly, a lot of effort went into getting that measure passed. Certainly, it's wonderful to see that there's enough money so that a few improvements can be made that haven't been made in the past. But having a few of another five people to look at, it seems like a really good idea, as long as they understood what they were looking for and why. I think Susan Harvey's idea is very good. I think that Laurie Alderman's suggestion is a good one, too. Rather than go back and get your buddies and your neighbors, let's get some more young people in Katati involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to comment on this item? All right, seeing no one, I'll close up the comments. We'll come back to the council for any more direction that you'd like to give to that. Yes, Councilmember Landman.
Well, just a general comment, thank you, Madam Mayor. Certainly, I think this is an advisory committee. Granted, its power is very, very limited, but to, first of all, there's no need to insult anyone who chooses to serve by calling them lapdogs, nor is it reasonable to say that they would use as scapegoats, or, I, I just want to say at that time, I'm thinking it couldn't be more off the mark, simply because, first of all, there's ultimate responsibility clearly blazed for this council, and that's why we have the full control over that. But I want to point out, there's some significant power even in an advisory committee, and I know Councilmember Harvey remembers this very well, remember our first year on council with the WAC? The water advisory council only has one power, very similar to what we're proposing here, which is to weigh in at the end of the year on the water agency's budget. Normally, that's a very smooth process. One time, our city's actually banded together and made some noise about that. The wonderful thing is there was change afterwards. So that ability to look at something in a general sense, to see if they feel it's meeting the spirit and the intent of Measure G, and to be able to publicly state that is a pretty powerful one. I think it's a valuable thing, so I just want to make sure everyone's clear on what we're proposing. It is an advisory committee, but it actually has some significant power with that one, one ability. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or direction, members of the staff, beyond what we have? Yes, Councilmember Lottos.
Thank you very much. It is very hard to blame a committee that's advisory, and obviously, we do have the ultimate responsibility as the elected body and leadership of this city, so the responsibility always comes right to us. I believe, Mr. Mayor, we need to comment that, you know, it's silly to have them meet a few times a year, and all I can find under the bold heading of meeting dates and location, which was also reiterated by our acting city manager, is that they meet on an annual basis, which I believe is once a year, not a few times a year. So, you know, there is the option, and I think it was in the report, about putting the standard advertisement out for, like we do with committees and commissions. So, you know, that is a process that is very wide open to any citizen, whoever, whatever the criteria is that we've tentatively established here, so people can be applying. I think it's up to, you know, anybody and everybody that lives in the city to talk to their neighbors, like, hey, would you be interested in doing something like this? They only meet once a year, don't think it's a burden at all, so I think this proposal as written is very good. Again, I'd like to maybe just finish the discussion, I don't think we did yet, on length of terms. If we're all okay with them mimicking who we might appoint from the people that apply, so be it. But I just want to make sure that we're all okay with that before we move this thing forward tonight. Thank you.
Okay, do we need a thumbs up, thumbs down on that issue?
It can be, it doesn't need to be a vote.
Yeah, well, and we also have the issue brought up, too, we want five members or three members, so we're still fairly open, and I do like the idea, too, that it's a resolution, so we can always come back and, and adjust it as needed. So, does anybody have more comments, Mr. Mayor?
No, I think at this point, we're just going to have to, if we put it out for application, we're going to see who's going to apply, what the interest is, and then that might allow us to get a little bit better direction. So I think, if I'm correct, the direction I would be to put out the application process for the advisory committee.
Yeah, we should have it established.
Right, so the, the next step, of course, would be to, assuming the council's okay with this, we'll come back in the next meeting, you can adopt the actual resolution, and then we could advertise at any point after that, get the body in place, get the application period done, the body in place for the, for the fall.
Councilmember Martin.
Are there any age restrictions on someone serving on any of our committees? I mean, I do like the idea, we've had some, certainly some of our honorary mayors and some other folks that have come before us show promising interest in that possibility, but I didn't know if we have any age requirements. I saw that must be a resident, but...
Right, I'm not aware of any age requirement or anything that, you know, requires it can be voting age or voter merely a resident, so I think you would have flexibility there.
Thank you.
And then, I think the only other issue is what we, who brought up, Councilmember Harvey, about it doesn't need to be a separate account or a separate line item on the budget or things like that, so, but that might be something that we can do outside of the just appointing.
Well, yeah, because I think that we're going to have to decide what it is that they're going to exactly look at. Are they going to look at all the check registers? Are they going to look at a final financial statement that really just has, you know, really general information? I mean, I really would like to see some plot into, you know, how, what are they going to look at? Because I know certainly when we go out to get a planning commissioner, we can kind of say, well, these are the kind of things you're going to do, and these are, you know, what the expectations are, and I'm not feeling at least comfortable with what it is that we're going to give them to look at so that they can kind of do their job and be successful at it.
I, I'll just add, you know, I think in a general sense, it's going to, you know, what I would envision is that they would be looking at the budget, the audit statement, and if they're curious about, so they'd start with that, and if, if there's any interest in, it'll probably depend on the individual as to what level of detail they want to get into, but certainly that it can, you know, it can provide them with detail from our, you know, accounting system on specific things, if they're interested in what made up of this total. So, you know, it's, anything that's a public record would be, I think, available to them if they asked for it.
So we're not going to provide anything specific, we're just giving them the same basic budget that we get, and then it's up to them to say, yeah, I, I get it, I get it, and I understand how you've taken all the funds and what you've done, and it's appropriate. Is that what you're saying?
Well, I think, I mean, that's, you know, an obvious starting point, and then I think as they have questions, then, you know, we can provide whatever information we need to explore.
Because I agree with, you know, Councilmember Landman, you know, we've, we've made some, because it is general, and we've made some commitments, but they're general commitments, it's a general sales tax, and whether or not we're meeting the spirit of providing those services and increasing certain services. But I just, you know, we understand how we got there, and we do, you know, the strategic planning and then the budgeting and all that, and I just want to be sure that if we're going to have someone follow along and look at that, then, you know, and it, and it may be as simple as, you know, they, a requirement that they attend our budget sessions, both the planning and as well as the budget sessions, so that they kind of are, know what we did and what we intended along the way. I'm just throwing that out.
Okay, so since we don't have to make a motion on this, is there any other direction that we want to provide at this point?
I have one additional comment I want to add, Councilmembers, Councilmembers Harvey, Councilmember Harvey was putting the possessive on the wrong part. You know, okay, so I've done budgets, I've looked at city budgets, I've done federal budgets for almost 30 years, and when we want to track something, regardless of what the revenue source is, if it's a direct congressional allocation, if it's whatever fees that are collected, you can track it, you can track it pretty easily, you know this, you've seen millions of budgets yourself. So I think the way the city tracks a lot of these things are through specific fund numbers, and you could very easily go, you know, have finance go back in and say, okay, Fund 23, making these numbers up, how much money was spent in Fund 23 this fiscal year? And you would pretty quickly get a report that would probably have some level of detail. You know, I think when you're looking at a lot of that we said as we were walking around, you'd look at a police officer's salary and benefits, or what's that full amount? You'd look at it the same with the maintenance employees, and then other issues, you know, there's going to probably be some of that money going to the road improvement work that's going on, and those are sort of some big figure items. And so I don't think it's going to be a very complicated list, but I'm pretty confident that the budget folks here will be able to pull that figure out in a relatively brief report. And I think personally, if I were on that committee and I had that level of detail, I at least have a pretty clear understanding where the money got spent. Here's the revenue that came in, here are the expenditures, is there a difference? And it's not to say that there weren't other fund sources that helped pay for the police officer, the road improvements, or the maintenance employees, but these dollar figures were attached to these tasks, if you will, from this source of revenue. And I think it's a pretty simple thing, I've been, I've been doing the part budget for the last three months because we've been without a budget officer. Thank God I've hired one, so I can push that off and be done with that part of my life. And, you know, when you're tracking $12 million and making sure that there's myriad fund sources that they're coming in from and where they're going out to, you can do that. I mean, there's, there's a multiple number of budgeting-type programs and finance programs you can use, and ours is probably the most ridiculous and complicated in, for the federal government, not here at the city. So I, I don't know, I have a lot of confidence that a pretty, relatively simplistic but very accurate report could come out at the end of the fiscal year. And I'm not contradicting anything you're saying, but I'm thinking that, that's, that's how I envision this, and I can really see it happen that way.
I mean, you're really suggesting that, that we, we do sort of the fund approach, we can kind of see it in one spot rather than how we see all the different...
I don't, I don't think this committee, first of all, they don't have that charge to do that. They're, they're, we're proposing, this committee's going to be around to look at the revenues that came in and how they got expended from this source.
From that source, yeah.
And that's it. And I think we can call that out and have a report come out for it. I don't think it's that difficult. Those are my thoughts.
Very good. So we have provided direction, and I don't believe we need to make a motion or anything like that, so, okay, perfect.
Just, I'm sorry, just one clarification on part of it. The discussion on the terms and staggering, was there some direction on including the wording here regarding that, or are we going to rely on the planning commission process?
Are we okay with mirroring the planning missions?
Yeah.
And getting general thoughts and thumbs up, so, there you go. All right, thank you. So let's move on to the city manager's report. So you're still on, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So I've got a couple things. Last Friday, if, if you were unfortunate enough to be in East Katati, the railroad tracks, SMART was testing their great crossing safety systems, which means they're driving the gates and slowly running a large freight train back and forth across East Katati. And I didn't hear anything bad from that testing, so I believe everything checked out fine, the safety systems, all worked as intended, which is a good thing. And then also, the interconnect with the signal system, tear away, also seems to be working fine, so that's, that's all good news. On March 26th, there is a SITE event in Windsor, and so SITE is, because I'm not familiar with all these acronyms yet myself, but this is the Combined Intensive Traffic Enforcement Program, where motor officers from around the county target or saturate a certain area or type of enforcement. And as you recall, they recently had one in Runaway Park, this one, they do one every month, this one is going to be in Windsor, again, looking at school centers and traffic enforcement around there, where our, our motor officer, it's a one-day, it's a one-day enforcement exercise, our motor officer will be up there, and then fairly soon, he'll rotate to Katati, and we'll have our own site event, where motor officers run around with him, they will converge on the area, and it tends to leave a lasting impression on the motors that pass through, something like that. And then, and this has already been mentioned in the meeting tonight, but I just wanted to remind or announce that the general plan will be on the city council agenda for March 24th, so that will be, that'll be, I'm sure, a good discussion that night. And I also wanted to mention, as, you know, as you all know, this has been going on for a while, but the Katati Citizens for Open Market Competition versus the City of Katati, which was the, was regarding the Solid Ways to Franchise Agreement with Redwood Empire Disposal. was regarding the solid waste franchise agreement with Redwood Empire disposal, that was dismissed by the judge with prejudice just recently. So that seems to be at its end. And then finally, this new agenda that you got tonight was published with our new legislative management software and our city clerk is extremely excited about that. So you'll notice that it largely mirrors our existing agenda, except you'll notice that in the top right corners there's agenda items and in the bottom right corners there's the packet page number. So unlike our older agenda system, this one has the agenda items on all the tops of pages to make it easier to find things on the bottoms. It has a sequential packet page number, so regardless of whether or not there's attachments or whatever happens to be attached to the staff report, every page has a SEK page number, again, to try to make it easier to navigate and hopefully for user friendly. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for our acting city manager on this report?
Yes.
Councilmember Landman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a question either for acting city manager, but perhaps it might be for a city attorney, our city attorney. But I'm curious, for mining this term dismissal with prejudice, now I'm not an attorney, I'd like to hear a more description of what that means. It sounds to me like something's being dismissed pretty thoroughly. What exactly does that mean? Is that speaking to the merits of the proposed case?
It is. The court in its order found that the complaint lacked merit and that the petitioners would be unable to amend their complaint to provide the necessary requirements for their action, namely it hinged on the fact that a copy of the agreement that was attached to the resolution adopting the solid waste franchise program was not attached to the referendum petition. There's a well settled body of law in California that the voters and petitioner signers are entitled to see all attachments to the resolution that's in issue. And after many, many months of discovery and hearings and motions and papers filed by both sides, the judge concluded that the document was not attached, was required to be attached and therefore there was no merit to requiring this referendum to be filed and heard and voted upon by the voters.
Well, I'm unsurprised to see that, but it's unfortunate it took a year or a year and a half to get to the point of saying there was no merit evidently to this case or to the facts within it, but I'm going to hear that. Thank you for explaining that for me.
Okay. Yes, Mr. Barich, commenting on the city manager's report items.
Hey, I'm not an attorney either, but I will tell you what I do know about Superior Court rulings and judgments. For the most part, they're subject to appeal. And also the fact is that just because a Superior Court judge ruled that an attachment should have been there on the petitioner's statement going door to door does not mean that the case did not have merit, that the city did not err, that the city did not particularly play favorites with a waste management company, that the city did not open up this contract, this 10-year garbage contract to other bidders in a fair and honest way. The ruling did not say that the city was not at fault in any of those other issues, that the city played favorites and did not allow these other bidders to bid on the garbage contract. So in that sense, it's not that the city has clean hands. This may be a procedural victory for the city at the Superior Court level that maybe the petition should have had the full contract on there, but there is an appeals process and there probably will be an appeal as far as I can imagine and that the city should do what it can to right its wrong and try to settle this lawsuit going forward because the city erred. The city had unclean hands here and it was all on the public record. I came up and I objected to the fact that the city needed to extend the vote for 30 days and let the other bidders bid on the contract in an open and honest setting and the city refused because of Diane Thompson. They played favorites and they did not answer emails to the other contract bidders and I think it's a disgrace. It's an embarrassment, it's a stain on the city. You can applaud it all you want, Mr. Landman, but the fact is, as they say, the show isn't over until the fat lady sings.
Is there anyone else that would like to comment on the city manager's report items? All right, so you know, now close the public comment. Now we'll move on to both of the other real one.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. When they knew the SITE in Washington and Catari, will we have a heads up on that? Or will that be a surprise?
No.
I can handle it.
Okay, yes, Councilmember Landman.
While we're on the subject of our waste management contractors, a general question for staff. In terms of the desired viability of services and total cost of the contract we have for our citizens, how does the contract we have, that we negotiated, the one we're discussing, compare to other cities throughout this county or the greater region? Where do we stand, top or the bottom in terms of services and combined cost? And I imagine there's some averaging. My sense was, I see a member stood pretty high, I believe it was Catari, is about the best in the region at the time?
So generally, so the services are comparable to other municipalities in the county that are served by the same franchise waste toller. And in terms of costs and benefits to the community, I'd have to get back to the exact information, but as I recall, it was a very favorable franchise agreement from the city. I'm feeling very clean hands about that. In terms of looking out for all of you out there, that's the type of thing we should be doing.
All right, now we'll move on to city council reports. So I'll start to my right. How about Councilwoman Donaldsohn?
All right, thank you very much. A couple of things. It was the two days after our last council meeting, we had the monthly Ag and Open Space District Meeting. There's now two back-to-back meetings. I'm on the Ag Subcommittee that I thought it would be wise, I think I mentioned this last week, that it would be wise to create this Ag Subcommittee. I think when people think of Snoma County Ag Preservation and Open Space District, open space, open space comes up and we think of these small or large tracts of land, Taylor Mill and a lot of different areas that have been preserved by Snoma County Ag and Open Space. But I was really curious and I thought it needed more of a presence, the preservation of ag lands that has been done in the county. And I didn't know, I haven't been on this committee for several years now, it's like, well, show me the acreage, because we're at about 110 or so thousand acres that have been protected in Snoma County and it's roughly, it was about 40% of that, 40,000 acres is in some form of ag production. So it could be crops, it could be grazing, it could be a lot of different things. So I thought that was a really good number to start with. So we're going to be, every month, we're going to have our meeting before the regular Ag and Open Space District. And at the Ag and Open Space District Meeting, we actually were discussing what initial public access is. It's been defined, it's been since, well, it's going to be approved, we hope, by the Board of Supervisors, but there's a provision in the last public tax that went through from Ag and Open Space. There's a lot of money that comes in annually based on how it's set up and what's really interesting is the fact that there was never any definition on if you buy this large tract of land, now what? And I mean, really to get public interested, you should have public access to these tracts of land so they can say, hey, look where a quarter cent of my tax dollars is going, right? A quarter cent. So we came up with some definitions, we all agreed to, agreed, took a while, but we got there and the staff did a great job. The bottom line is initial public access would be things like maybe a gravel parking lot, nothing permanent in other words, maybe a trailhead sign, portable restroom as opposed to a concrete fixture. And a lot of times what happens with Ag and Open Space is they acquire these properties and then they turn them over to different agencies. Snoma County Regional Parks probably has the bulk of them, I think State Parks has done a little bit and a couple of other groups out there. So we did go around and around, but I think we came to an agreement and I don't know if that has gone to the Board of Supervisors yet, but hopefully it will and it sounds like they were initially in favor of this as well. And the only other issue I had is, I know this coming Saturday, several of us will be participating in this, the student speaker contest from the Catari Lions Club. So that'll be taking place Saturday at 1:00, but we have to be there at noon. And it's fun to be a judge on the other side of the table and not feel any pressure. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember, well, I gave you almost all my reports last time, I was pretty busy, but I do want to ask our acting city manager, this evening came out the white paper for the Waste Management Agency. I would appreciate if you could get that out to all the council members. Oh wait, the paper was done on the value of the Waste Management Agency and I think as we progress with that, it'll be important for everyone to really understand that. And it was something that was asked to be put together so that, because some of the cities, there was a lack of communication and so this white paper was put together. So Damian, I believe we'll get that out to you and I think it will be worthwhile for you to take a look at that as that moves forward this year. Very good. Councilmember Landman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nothing special to report, but one thing I did think I would mention was in the news, didn't get a lot of news, we might have missed it, but recently, last week, the city of Snoma had a meeting looking at fluoridation and much like we did about a year, year and a half, time goes quickly, I can't believe it's been that long. But I just thought it was interesting to see that they had a meeting similar to us and after having a chance to do that, they had a majority vote and chose to send a letter much like we did. So they've joined Sebastopol and our city, three cities now seeing the same thing we did. Interesting to see the cities taking ball and this initially, we see we're all, to this point, seem to seem roughly in the same light.
Okay, thank you. And Vice Mayor Moore.
We just had a board meeting for RE/MIF up in New Kaya today and the 16 cities that are in there have determined that they do want to go forward with potential self-funding for the RE/MIF and the medical insurance and the benefits. And it was unanimous, all 16 cities voted on that and the preliminary numbers are pretty good. We'll have more formal introduction in April on that committee. So I'm still waiting for your questions.
Great, thank you. And then I'll just conclude with, it's amazing how you don't have anything happening and then everything happens in one week. So on February 25th, I went to the State of the City Luncheon hosted by the Chamber of Commerce and it was really interesting because I hadn't realized they wanted me to speak for the entire lunch. So that was, it was interesting, but it was very well received. There was a lot of good input from the people, the different businesses that were attending. And then what was really wonderful to attend was on the 26th, was the ribbon cutting for the second home that was opened on the Woodland Hills property by Habitat for Humanity. And I did manage to not need a tissue until the father of the family spoke and at that point, all bets were off. And what was really fun too is that I met two of the morning DJs who I listen to, Stacy K and Jonah from 101.7. And so I talked with them briefly and then on the news on the radio the next day, they had that audio of the father speaking again and so I wanted to call them up saying, baby cry on my way to work again. But it's wonderful to see different organizations all coming together to help this family out and they have some new special needs, so it was particularly touching to have some of that burden lifted off of their shoulders. So anyway, it was wonderful. And Steel and Quilson, they did this wonderful thing, which I don't think they did at the first ribbon cutting where they had everybody who would volunteer their time to stand in semicircle around the entrance way of the home and then they passed the key through everyone's hands. So there was every hand, then it touched, building of the home touched the key as well and then handed it over to the family. So anyway, it was really beautiful and even though it was on a Thursday at lunch break, there was a huge crowd there, so it was wonderful to see that many people turn out. So, and we got a lot of accolades to our city planning commissioner, I'm sorry, planning department. Luckily, Vicky Parker's not here, so she didn't hear me gaffe that one. All right. So I will adjourn this meeting, we will adjourn to closed session to finish out our other two items. Thank you very much, everyone.